Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November 15th City Council Meeting, November 16th City Council Meeting for the City of Cannon Falls Door Order. Can we have roll call, please?
Bringle, here.
Duncan, here.
Yezmy, here.
Gronenberger.
Here.
Lindell, here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Althoff.
Here.
Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you've seen the agenda. Is there any corrections or additions that you'd like to make? I think I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Bringle to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we'll get into public input. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the city council. The public input will be no longer than 30 minutes in total length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the meeting. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments should be made at the public hearing. The city council will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item and a future agenda. Okay, first of all, Sue, if you can forward, she's, topic is farmer's market.
Hello, my name is Sue Petron. I live at 107 Riverside Terrace in Cannon Falls. I come on behalf as a business owner here in Cannon Falls and as well as an advocate for the elderly and the handicapped and those who don't have a car to get around town, as well as the 224 people that have voiced their opinion on wanting to have the farmer's market back downtown. We would like to have it, it's not, not saying that we need one or the other, but to have it downtown just reaches more of the people in town who can't drive south. We would like it open to, as a community market, selling not only food, but flowers and plants and soaps or anything else that people make out of their own goods. Right now, it stands as you can only sell food and plants. When I worked with Freeborn Manor for the last 15 months, I recognized how many people in town here have to walk in order to get groceries, in order to be a part of the town. And a lot of them don't have cars, as well as people at Park Street, as many as Twin Rivers. There's just a lot of people in town that not only use it for food, but to use it as a social gathering. They look forward to that, to getting out, visiting people, going to the post office at the same time the grocery store whatsoever. It has impacted my business, being on the parking lot side, the city parking lot side of my, is my business, and having it down to two vendors makes it not very appealing. And again, I'm not saying one or the other, but why can't we have both? As an asset to Cannon Falls, people coming in, a lot of people come into my business from out of town, and as an asset to them visiting Cannon Falls on a Saturday, to have the farmer's market people have to pay $100 to sell their goods at the community parking lot is ridiculous, I feel. And especially when you're talking about little Lola Winchell, who sells lemonade to raise money for Toys for Tots, and she has to pay a fee in order to do that. That's ridiculous. The other thing that I have heard from the people, the vendors, is that there is no contact person. There's no contact person, whoever made up those, the rules this last spring, there's nobody to, who do you talk to? Who do you, who do you make suggestions to? Who do you complain to? Who do you ask? You know, there is no contact person for the farmer's market. That's, that's not right. So, I, again, it's not either or, it's, I'm requesting that the C-zone be open to all as a community market, for all ages, to sell their produce, flowers, and homemade goods, free of charge. Also, I need a contact person to check in with and share concerns with. Please consider this request for the Spring 2022 Farmer's Market on behalf of these people and myself, and those who have shared their concerns but have not signed my petition. Thank you for hearing me.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sue. Bob.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure just what to say here, but my property that along Highway 52, 11 acres, I guess it was zoned kind of open for anything, and...
Oh, okay. Well, we'll talk, you probably sit down, we'll talk about that, it's on the agenda here.
Sorry, I thought you were here for something else.
Yeah, I know, something else, okay. Rosie.
Yeah, Rosie Schluter here, and I'm here because 40 years ago, Norm and Gail Prinzing, you guys, some of you remember names, and my husband Paul and I, we wanted to get a country market going. And so, Norm thought, okay, we'll go up towards 20, go up here by the railroad tracks, Mensing, all the whole thing. And it didn't draw people. You need the market where the people are, the people who don't know about the market aren't going to go up there and walk up there. So that's why I did go to the city council, and I, I'm new to town, I'm here a couple of years, we had a farm, and I walked in and I said, could we do this in the city parking lot? And they decided it would be a good idea, and they did it. And I said, well, you know, I'm not a farmer, I just got a zillion green beans, I'd never want to pick another bush of green beans. Okay, but anyway, so we could share that, and the thing is, that was so funny, is that I'm walking out, and I walk fast, and they, I heard them say, she's not a farmer, but she walks like a farmer. These are good guys. Okay, so, it was fun. The point was that we wanted it homemade and homegrown, because we didn't want outside marketers coming in and taking over our community. But that was 30 years ago. I still think we want the same thing, so if you could, please consider it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Rosie.
Thanks, Rosie. Okay, that's all I got on public input, so I'm going to close the public input portion of the meeting. Next is a presentation. It's the Cannon Falls Library Strategic Plan 2022 to 2024 Presentation.
So, I'm here, but Nicole is here too.
So I'm Elizabeth Irman, I'm the Vice President of the Board of the Library.
Okay.
And I came just in case it didn't work out. So, but we wanted to talk about the presentation, or the strategic plan which you do have in your packet, and, and I came in particular to support the, just so that you know that this was conducted in a, you know, a realistic way, but also a very strategic way with the help of Selco and their professional strategic planning folks. So Nicole, if you want to talk about this?
Okay, so what you have in your packet is the library's 2022 through 2024 strategic plan. We, I kind of want to go over how we did it. This summer with the help of Selco, we started it by going through the steps of distributing a community survey to over 5,000 people, 5,000 homes through a mail campaign and distributing the survey at community events and in the library, and we were able to get 210 results, or responses. And that came out to about 4% of our population, and a good turnout is 2%. So I really am grateful to all of the people who responded, because you gave us really good information to give us a good strategic plan. After that, then Selco and I selected and invited stakeholders to a workshop in September, where we took that information and we narrowed it down, needs in the community, and how the library can meet those needs. Also in September, we had a staff workshop, and in that workshop, we gathered staff input without assessing and meeting community needs. And then after all of that, then I met with our consultants at Selco, and we drafted an initial strategic plan and an initial new mission statement to go with all of the information that we've gotten. And with that draft, I brought it to the library board, and over the past two months, in our October and our November meetings, then we discussed our goals and objectives and our mission statement, and we finalized them based on all of the information that we've gathered. So our final strategic plan was approved in the library board meeting on November 8th. It's going to go into effect January 1st, and in the meantime, the library staff and I are going to be meeting in later this month, so that we can determine what action items we need to take to meet the goals and objectives over the next three years, so that we can be the best library that Cannon Falls has ever had. And then the library board and I are going to be meeting quarterly to evaluate our progress. So there are going to be a lot of changes in the next three years, and I want to tell you, share our new mission statement, that is, the Cannon Falls Library welcomes and strengthens the community, supports literacy, provides access to information, and fosters lifelong learning and enrichment. And then, based on all of the information we gathered, we broke down all of the information into a few main themes, because there were some definite themes that came up in our information gathering, and we based the goals and objectives of this plan on those themes. And the goals and objectives are, goal one, to provide a welcoming and accessible space. And the objective is improve the patron experience by removing barriers and increasing access. Now staff and I are going to meet on how we can do that better. And we already have some ideas, but there are going to be some really good things coming with this. Goal number two is support the communication of ideas through collections and services. Objective one, assess and expand physical collections to meet community needs. Objective two, expand service outside normal library hours. That one, I'm looking into getting some library lockers or something, so that maybe people can grab things if they can't make it to the library when we're open. Objective three is improve our online presence, so look for a revamped website and other things. Goal three, foster lifelong learning through programs and community conversations. Objective one is host more community conversations in the library. We want people coming to the library and talking about things that are important to you, because we know that people have things to say, and we know that people want to talk. Objective two, host and sponsor programs that engage the community. So again, listening to the community and what you want. And objective three, strengthen and increase partnerships. Even though this is a goal and objective, starting next year, we've already started this particular objective. Goal four is increase professional development opportunities for library staff to better engage and serve the needs of the community. Objective one is develop professional development policies, and objective two is provide targeted development opportunities to meet identified community needs. So for us to do a better job, we need to be better at our job. So sometimes we need to revamp our skills and we need to learn more, but you know, that that also is going to require the library board and I coming up with ways to make sure that staff are learning more, so that we can stay on top of things to help people, like, and stay cutting edge. And so that's the end of my presentation aspect. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Or comments, or anything.
Nicole, I just did want to add one thing. One nice thing about the survey was, we got back more, more than one person who had, does not use the library, responded to the survey. And that really helped us, helped kind of inform some of our objectives, because the, it wasn't just the choir singing to us. And then, we really appreciate that, so if you were a respondent, we especially appreciate that.
Yeah, that, I really wanted to make sure that people who don't use the library gave us input too, because we can't reach out to people that aren't using the library if we don't know why. So I am very grateful to all of the people who don't use the library for sharing that why.
Good.
Very good.
Very good.
Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll get into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, as we go through the consent agenda. Item A is just and correct claims for the accounting period ending November 10th, 2021. Item B, minute meetings for the November 2nd, 2021 City Council Meeting. Item C, approve the street shop, Cannon Valley Trail building furnace. Item D, Resolution 2588, approving a cooperative snow removal agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation. Item E, approve the county 24 Hickory Drive reversion. Item F, Resolution 2589, approving the municipal consent project along County State Aid Highway Number 17. Item G, Resolution 2590, approving the municipal consent project along County State Aid Highway Number 20. Item H, Resolution 2591, approving the municipal consent project along County State Aid Highway Number 22. Item I, Resolution 2592, approving the municipal consent project along County State Aid Highway Number 24. Item J, Resolution 2593, approving the municipal consent project along County State Aid Highway Number 25. And Resolution 2594, approving the municipal consent project along County State Aid Highway Number 29. Item L, approve the Public Works Maintenance 1 position. And item M, approve the disposal of the 1991... And item M, approve the disposal of the nineteen ninety-one Ford Pumper truck. Is there anything the council would like to pull down? Anything? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve the council consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Lundell and a second by Duncan to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, council business. Item A, it is the introduction and first reading of ordinance three eighty-one. It's an ordinance of the city of Cannon Falls, Minnesota, amending the city code, chapter one fifty-two, relating to the conditional uses in the B-two highway business district. Neil, you wanna take that? Diane, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Okay, I'm gonna give you guys a little bit of background. This came about because of two actual EDA projects were proposed to us. One was an automobile dealership and the second one was a truck terminal. And we brought this to Planning Commission last week. And they voted to support bringing it to council. And, um, I do have Bob Banks here tonight and, could we bring Bob up now? Oh, not yet? Okay, okay. He'll, he'll talk, he'll talk during the public hearing, but is there any, are there, are there any questions that I can answer for the council?
Um, this isn't a public hearing though.
Okay, I'll wait.
No, I mean.
No, we don't have a public.
We don't have a public hearing today.
Oh, we don't? Okay, okay.
But Bob can certainly explain.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob, you wanna say anything?
Not necessarily, I guess, but.
Thanks, Bob. Good night.
My property, I don't know if you're familiar with it, all of ya? It's along Highway fifty-two. Okay, it's between the roundabouts and the bus boy's shed or Avalon.
Oh, okay.
And it's been for sale for, I don't know, eight years. I've owned it for the last three probably. And anyway, I have a buyer. Um, they tell me that, uh, they met with Diane and wanna know whether it fits or in that area in, under the city's ordinances. So, and that led us to here. They're talking a truck terminal, maintenance shop, I believe. I, I know the people. I believe they also have a car dealership, so. That's about all I know. So, it's, go ahead.
When you purchased the property, are you selling it for money and you paid for it?
The property has its city water, city sewer to it, and it is in the city. I was told by different people that it is the number one, well, number one or number two best piece of property, commercial property on Highway fifty-two. It's eleven acres we're selling. Um, they're gonna continue fourteen through there, which will divide it. There's actually a little over thirty acres there. So.
How much, uh, maybe you don't know, but how much land is between your property and Avalon? That, that bus guy, is it?
Well, I don't think there's any. It's just our piece. It goes behind the bus.
Oh, okay.
So, it's not really L-shaped, but it's, it isn't perfectly square.
Okay.
We wrap around two sides of the bus.
Okay.
So, so you don't have a map up, or do you? I see Matt's got a map up. Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if there's any questions. I don't know enough about them. I've never met the people. Okay, it's unto the realtors, so.
Yeah.
I can't really answer a lot of questions about it.
So, you're just selling the property?
I'm just selling the property.
So, the, uh, the EDA came forward to rezone?
No, it, it, they were EDA propositions, basically. They weren't, they didn't go to the EDA per se, but they are EDA projects. Or, you know, it's, it's a chance to expand our tax base, add more businesses in town.
What I'm asking is, didn't someone have to apply for the?
It didn't, it wasn't a project that came through the EDA. It came through.
It, it went through planning and zoning. Yeah, it, it came through me, through planning and zoning. It was a development application that was pulled, Steve.
Because the current zoning doesn't fit what you wanna do.
Right.
But it's, it's gotta be, someone's name is on there, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Banks came to us to get the land rezoned.
Bob, Bob, Bob and Marlene, yes.
It's a development application, not a business subsidy application.
Right, right.
I was, I was just wondering, somebody had to be on the.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, from what I'm understanding, Dan, wasn't it kind of a broad zone or something? Cause we didn't know what was going to be there, or how was it?
The B-two did not allow for truck terminals and auto sales. So, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna add that in there because when you go to a lot of the different neighboring towns such as Hastings and Red Wing and Rochester even, you see truck terminals and auto sales along the highway corridors a lot of the times.
It's the Rota, too.
It's the Rota, too. Um, it seemed logical, so we thought, you know, they pulled the application. We had Sarah Swartz off, um, draft this up for you guys to take a look at and to consider, and we'll see where it goes from there.
Sure.
Would this apply to all B-two districts or just this specific one?
Um, there, it would apply to the B-two, all of them.
So, all B-two, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But they would have to have sufficient space.
And it's a conditional use permit, just so you know, Derek. Um, it isn't something that they could just do. They would have to come in and they would have to ask for your permission, so. And they'd have to meet all the conditions and they'd have to make sure that you guys are happy with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I would just comment, uh, Planning Commission unanimously approved going.
They did, four to zero, yes. Good.
Very good.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, thank you.
I just wanna bring up, uh, you've all gotten this, uh, by Riverside. I've handed out a letter from Jim Johnson.
We have to hold on.
We have to finish this.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the change in, uh, ordinance number three eighty-one.
I'll second.
Motion by Duncan, a second by Gesmi to approve amending the city code, chapter one fifty-two. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, now, I handed out from Jim Johnson down the Riverside Terrace a letter that he sent about his water usage. We're not gonna take any action on that tonight, but it's something for you to read. Uh, Public Works will be dealing with it again in December and it'll probably be on the council agenda in the first meeting in December. Okay, um, a little bit about the farmer's market. There's a petition here. Wasn't that, it was open to downtown, wasn't it? Did this nobody just came downtown and what happened there?
Yeah, I don't know, John. I know, I think that Molly's were the managers of that. You know, the city wasn't involved in that anymore. But, yeah, they did, um, Sarah Swartzoff, she had made up an ordinance for that, um.
Yeah, we approved that earlier this year.
Yep, and Molly, I believe Tim Molly was maybe the manager down there. I know that Lola was not charged because that was in one of the rules and regulations that Sarah Swartz had, had wrote up that if they were sixteen and under, they didn't get charged. So, I know that Lola wasn't paying.
Well, and you can't make people come either.
No, no.
I don't think Molly's were down there, were they?
Yeah, they were. They were usually, um, the fairies I looked, there would be three to four downtown and twelve to fifteen out at Artisan Plaza.
And it was, it would be Molly and then Lola. And then, when it was in season, Josephson's.
Yeah.
And one or two others.
And one or two other, but not every week.
And the guy was there.
Yes.
When his produce was there, so it was like five or six weeks.
Right, right.
That was Johnny Zimmerman.
But there were definitely two markets, yeah.
Yeah, clearly.
And they had the options.
Oh, yeah, yeah, wide open, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, but she was saying that it was like they were prohibited or something. I mean, that was open. Does anybody wanna come down there?
Yeah, yeah.
And Lola was not being charged. I remember that.
Right, yeah, sixteen and under.
I mean, that could have just been misunderstanding.
Yeah, and that's okay.
The only request that I heard that we don't allow already is the fee to get into it. That was a request that they had that there would be no fee. The rest of it is allowed. It's allowed in the, the eight spots, I believe, um, where Sue's Garage Sales is. It's the four in the front, the four overflow is on the other side of the island.
Yep.
Right.
And that's all been set up. So, I, the only thing that I heard that she made a request for is, who should she talk to and the hundred dollar fee?
Okay.
And Diane can get her the ordinance stuff, but as far as the actual market, um.
We're not involved.
We're not involved, but, um, what's his name that, uh?
Tim Molly.
Tim Molly, um, can be contacted and, and be taking it from there.
Right.
Well, his petition to bring it back, it never went away, really.
Exactly, yeah, it was here, yeah.
And we had this fight, you know, a year ago.
It doesn't have to be a fight, so, yeah.
Just a point of clarification. My understanding and the vendors down there's understanding was that it could only be homegrown products. It could not be any homemade. It could not be any crafts. That was all eliminated and that kicked out a lot of people.
I'm not sure if that, that never changed.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's accurate.
I think we better refresh that.
We'll have to look at that, Neil.
Yeah, because I think, the only thing that we didn't want was stuff that was manufactured and brought in on secondhand.
We didn't wanna flea market.
Because otherwise, the nut guy couldn't be there either. And he came in with his nuts.
Right.
You know, he didn't grow those, I don't think.
So, I think we better look at that.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
But I think it's covered already.
Okay, just maybe you need to clear it up.
Get some ground rules before next spring, anyway.
Sure.
And the hundred dollar fee isn't every Saturday, right?
No.
Once a year, the whole season.
It was either a hundred dollars for the season or ten dollars per.
I think it comes out to be like three or four dollars a Saturday.
If you're there every week.
Yeah, if you're there every week.
That little girl did not pay either.
No, no, Lola did not pay.
And we have, we have to charge because, you know, we do have to have our Public Works guys, uh, do some extra cleaning up occasionally.
I thought that when we had, when we had this discussion the first time, it was something about the licensing as a state requirement because they, everybody would tell the stories of you used to show up and do the stuff out of the trunk of your car and you had a few extra something.
No, you needed insurance.
And that was, yeah, insurance via the state, but the fee, that's not state related, that's?
No, that's, that's a state.
Okay.
It still goes through the licensing map because we have to, as a city being in the city parking lot, we have to make sure that they adhere to all the rules and regulations. So, it's just kind of a paper, paper cost.
Which recharge fees for a lot of things, so.
There was a, uh, if I remember right, there was a discussion, you'd get two stalls for a hundred and fifty or one stall for a hundred and you rejected that and you went down to just the one hundred for it. So, um, no, it's all, it should be all set up.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I don't think there's too much work to do there, but maybe for some clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, when it first opened in the early summer, there was only a couple vendors there most of the summer. You know, three or four showed up in September, but, you know, there wasn't a lot of people down there.
Right, cause I, like I said, I visited both and there was many, many times more out at Artisan.
Yeah.
To count the vendors that did not go down to Artisan, but they went to Farmington and Northfield. They chose not to go to Artisan. Because they needed more than one space or they had product that wasn't homegrown. It was crafts. So, we've eliminated those vendors from being in Cannon Falls.
But we also had to take into account the safety factor down there with the, uh, people that are coming to bike our trails and stuff. That's why we moved it to the, uh, upper part of the, for safety reasons, so.
Totally fine.
Yeah.
Totally fine, but to confine it to one space. And the applicant uses more than one space.
Yeah.
Kyle, I do know that we had at least two or three, um, different vendors uptown that came into the city and applied for more than one space. So, they were allowed to do that if they, if they requested it and they paid for it.
Well, let's go with this before next spring and we'll get the ground rules.
All right.
Okay, reports. Kyle.
Anybody has a new hip? I would take it.
Kinda in there.
It's kind of in there?
Yeah, kinda in there.
I would first like to give a thank you card to Dan and his team at Public Works. Not only did they do the flower basket watering all summer, but if you've noticed, they've got the snowflakes up and they will be helping getting the garland and the big wreaths hung over the intersections. And so.
Just in appreciation.
Then, of course, the big event that is coming up is Deck the Falls. And that will be Saturday, November twenty-seventh. And from eight to noon, there is a lion's pancake feed at the fire department. And Santa will be doing a pop-in visit, simply meaning we're not sure when he'll be there or how long he'll be there, but he will be there. Then, we have sleigh rides from one to four out at Hannah's Bend Park. Hot chocolate will be served out there. And a little change this year, Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus will be at Cannon Bell's Coffee and Ice Cream for the visit, the, so you can bring your cameras to have pictures done with Santa. But it is at Cannon Bell's this year from two thirty to four thirty. The parade starts at five o'clock and we will get that started on Park Street between, uh, Fourth and Third and then along Third. So, we definitely need more parade units. And I do have an entry form, so people can let me know, you know, what the length is of their unit, if they're gonna have noise, music, singing, cause I don't wanna bunch those groups together. And so, if people would please contact the chamber office for that registration form, um, we need to have a nice parade. That would be wonderful. At about five thirty to five forty-five, the lighting of the tree ceremony will take place. And before the actual lighting, we do our holiday prize drawing of Chamber Dollar prizes. And they can be in the amounts of one hundred dollars, fifty dollars, or twenty-five dollars. And, uh, and so, the drawing boxes, I'm hoping to have them out this Friday. Um, and right now, we're looking at about fourteen locations throughout the, the community. And so, um, be sure to get out there and sign up for the drawing, all right? Um, and then the lighting of the tree, of course. We also have a Cannon Falls dance performance. And the reason we tucked that in there is because in two thousand and nineteen, we set the fireworks off right after the tree was lit and we had two people out there by the crow's nest. And they couldn't get out. And so, putting this dance performance, it gives the dance people a chance to perform it for the community, but it is also a safety, um, issue so we can get those people away from the gazebo, from the crow's nest and turning the lights on and things like that, okay? And then, of course, our fireworks. They will be set off from John Birch Park, coming across Cannon River and over the city parking lot. The one final thing that we've added this year, it's called a fifty-fifty Deck the Falls fireworks raffle. This raffle will have a cash prize of fifty percent of the ticket sales, up to fifteen hundred dollars. There is one prize, only one. dollars. There is one prize, only one, but the tickets are five dollars each. And so if we sell six hundred dollars worth of tickets, the prize is three hundred. If we sell three thousand dollars worth of tickets, some lucky winner gets fifteen hundred dollars. These tickets will be on sale in area businesses, and I would say that's going to be happening by the end of this weekend. Okay? Um, any questions in regards to Deck the Falls? I do want to announce, we have Light Up Cannon Falls coming back in the month of December. Light Up Cannon Falls Decorating will be from December third through the seventeenth. Homes, businesses, organizations, anyone can enter. What you need to do is send in your name and address as to where the location is. It can be a tree, it can be your whole house, or it could be your entire building. So we need your name and address. Those will be put into a drawing, and so the drawing will take place on December seventeenth, and that prize is seven hundred dollars. But then we also have a second and third prize coming in from Excel Energy and Dakota Electric Association, of course, to help offset those electric bills. All right? Buy local giving tree. Um, we will be, we are collecting names of families with children who need help getting Christmas presents. Now, we don't share those names, we simply have a tag that has boy or girl, the age range, they can tell us what colors they like, or if there's a specific gift they would like. We do have a limit of, and I don't have that on here, but it's, um, ten to fifteen dollars for the gifts, and anyone from the community can come in and pick a tag off the tree, and then please wrap it and bring it back, and then we'll make sure the families get them. And then we have a holiday scavenger hunt from December through, third through the fifteenth. It will be twelve days of clues. This year, we're going to have a list, so a list of twelve, that people need to come in and get the list, fill out where the addresses are where those clues went to, and then we will do a drawing of the completed forms that come back to us. And I want to say that's one hundred seventy-five and fifty for three drawings. Okay? So hopefully, um, you know, we have a great December, we get a lot of lights and decorations going up, that, uh, the Cannon Fall, uh, Light Up Cannon Falls Tour Map will be out on December seventeenth. We will post that on Facebook, Instagram, our webpage, and, uh, and then we'll have copies at the Chamber. But I mean, we had a great turnout last year, so I hope the community joins in again. Any questions? Wow, thank you very much.
Thanks, Kyle. Okay, EDA, Laura. Anything?
Good evening. Um, yeah, a couple things. Last week, we were able to, there were a few of us that went over to Red Wing. Um, our John Birch Park Walp, uh, reconstruction project, uh, made the fall bonding tour with the house, so we were able to go over and make our pitch. There's gonna be a lot of puns here, so hold on. Uh, but anyway, so it was Keith Myers and Neil, the mayor, myself, and, um, and Bucky, Lindo. Uh, so we went, we had our Cannon Falls baseball jerseys on, and I had pigtails in my hair, I probably looked like a fool. Uh, but then we were able to, um, present to them our, kind of the phase one of, uh, kind of doing some of the rehab projects for John Birch Park, which is, the main part is the safety of restoring the limestone wall that's crumbling before our eyes, and then also rebuilding the seating above it, and then incorporating a new first base dugout into that. So anyway, we, um, did an ask for four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars with a, hopefully, we'll be able to match, do some fundraising with, uh, John Birch Park supporters, um, and to be able to get that first phase done. So we won't know till probably May, I think is what they said, uh, if we, if we win or not. But we did leave them with some peanuts and crackerjacks, uh, to kind of hopefully make an impact on them, so visually, and, uh, we left them with a takeaway. And then we also have a link on, um, if you go to the city website under John Birch Park, you can also find a, a copy of that brochure, and then we'll continue to add information to that as, um, the John Birch Park supporters, um, start some campaigning, because they will be looking for some fundraising, uh, to go toward their match for that. Um, the Magnolia Animal Hospital just opened, um, yesterday, so Dr. Kurt Nelson is a Goodhue clinic, or Goodhue vet, he's a large animal vet that just opened yesterday out at the south end of Artisan Plaza, it used to be Real Deals. So we welcome him, so Diane and I actually stopped out yesterday and welcomed them with a little plant and some chocolates. Um, so we're excited to have a new business here, and I know that even six weeks ago, he said that his phone wouldn't stop ringing if people wanted to transfer the records, and he didn't even have his computer set up. So we told him that was a good problem to have, so we're, we're happy to have a new small animal vet clinic. Um, uh, the strategic plan, EDA will be having our strategic planning meeting coming up on December second, which is our regular EDA meeting. But I did want to make a note on your agenda for next month's meetings, that our meeting time is actually going to be at three o'clock, not three thirty, which is our typical EDA meeting time. We wanted to allot a little extra time, because I'm sure we're going to be so full of ideas that, uh, we'll need a little bit of extra time to, to get through that. So, uh, and then the last thing, just to kind of piggyback off of all the events that Kyle's got rolling with Deck the Falls, is, uh, next Saturday is also shop small. So just a reminder that before you start swimming out to the ocean after all those barges with all the shipping containers where you're, you think your Christmas presents are, um, buy some of those gift cards. Buy local, we've got a lot of little gift shops in town, um, we've got a lot of restaurants, we've got a lot of locally made products that, you know, one size does fit all when you think of those gift cards. So our, those dollars go even further in our own zip code. What is that, Kyle?
This is the Small Business Saturday Promotions and Sales that are going on Friday through Sunday, and so these will be out in the stores by the end of this weekend.
Okay, thank you. Yep, the Deck the Falls brochure does have some of the different specials and open houses that the businesses will be having, but again, before you start adding items to your Amazon cart, think, dump some of your money into our community first before you start shopping outside of our zip code. That's my pitch. Thank you. Bye.
Just to expand on that meeting we had down at Red Wing, I think that was an excellent meeting. Laura put together an excellent program, uh, that we handed out, and we had the undivided attention of the legislatures, and Keith gave a good speech, and, uh, we gave out the peanuts and whatever it was there, crackerjacks, and they even dug, they really dug that, so I think it went on.
They got off the bus.
Yeah. It really went good, so we'll see what happens next spring. So, okay, Public Works.
Um, a couple of things, we're on the consent agenda tonight. Did we have anything else?
Not really, except maybe a ribbon cutting in our future.
Yes, there may be a ribbon cutting in our future when the bridge gets finished someday, hopefully soon.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I think that was about it. Pretty short meeting.
Yep.
Okay, Park Board, Matt?
Uh, nothing big that had to come before the council, but we just, uh, the only thing of note is we had a discussion about, uh, if there's future development of Sandstone Ridge, there was land that was dedicated or that was allocated before to be a park, and we had a discussion on that, and to see if there's a developer that ever takes over that if we continue to maintain that there will be a park there. And I don't remember if action was taken, but we basically had a consensus that we would like to keep a park up there. Maybe not the same spot, maybe not the same layout, it doesn't have to be a ball field, just a park, which does make sense for that area after our discussion.
Okay, Finance Committee?
Yeah, we, first, we went over the final budget and levy, which will be coming as a public hearing, uh, first meeting in December. Uh, second, uh, we looked at adult entertainment application, uh, just in case someone ever decides to go out in the I-2 zone. Uh, we also looked at, uh, twenty-twenty-two license fees and compensation schedule. Uh, we are waiting for some from the Park Board about possible fees, changes and stuff. Uh, the fire truck, we took care of that tonight. Uh, there's a healthcare savings program for our supervisors' union that we're still working on, and myself and John and Neil will be working on that little project. And then we went over COVID policy. If you remember, the council approved, uh, starting in January, uh, if you're not vaccinated, wearing masks and testing a couple times a month. I would like us, as a council, after our December seventh meeting, to have a work session, because I know Neil needs to know all the specifics, how we're going to do it, and it'll allow us more time if we do it after a council meeting. Um, so unless anybody has an objection, are we okay doing it after the meeting on the seventh, as we're going to be here anyhow?
Can we, uh, have Sarah down?
Yeah, we, yeah, we would have to have Sarah down.
Okay.
Uh, that's it for that.
Okay, Planning?
Uh, that, uh, we had that on the agenda tonight, to change, uh, the B-2 Highway Business District, uh, item, so that's all we had there.
Okay. Okay, what's going on? Danny, you got anything here?
Just a couple of things. Kyle mentioned too, their Public Works is decorating downtown, so that's going on this week. Uh, another big thing is the Third Street water main underneath the bridge is, uh, hooked up on the north, and now we're hoping Thursday, starting about ten in the morning, to start hooking up the south end. So, uh, they put some door hangers out and notified the residents that might notice an interruption in water service that day. So, and, um, had another meeting on the bridge construction, so they're coming tomorrow to start riprapping the north end, and then once we get out of their way on the south end with the water main project, then they can riprap, and then they have some railings to put up, some guardrails, so maybe sometime mid-December. That's it.
Sounds good. Nicole, do you have anything else?
She seems kind of quiet.
There she is.
Yes, yes, I do. Okay, so I want to let you know some things going on at the library, um, in the month of December. So, uh, when is, is December first? I'm, I'm just looking at my calendar. We have Library in Motion, that is, um, I'm changing that one to Dance Walking. We kind of boogie to Golden Oldies, because that's what everybody really likes listening to. So if you happen to enjoy music from the fifties and sixties, you'll like this workout. Um, that's noon on Fridays in December and into, into January. On Saturday, September fourth, we have Holly Jorgensen, Saving Money, The Planet, and Your Sanity. So this is a program on how to save money, and, um, basically reusing things and recycling things. So that's going to be from eleven to twelve-thirty, it looks like it's going to be at the library. We have Storytimes, Monday is at ten-thirty, they are in the library now. And on the sixth, Monday, the sixth, at six P.M., I am doing a Make It Monday, and I've been, I'm doing this series where I'm teaching people how to crochet hats. And, um, the one that I'm doing in December is, uh, post crochet hat. So if anybody wants to learn how to make some hats, so you can save some money and give, like, you know, things for Christmas that only take you a few hours and don't cost a lot of money, that's the class for you. If you don't want to come to class, I am going to be posting it on YouTube as well at some point that week. Um, we have more things, uh, that we are, are partnering with the Cannon Falls School of Dance, and they are coming on September eighteenth from ten-thirty to eleven to do a Nutcracker Storytime, and reservations will, or registration will be required, so please call the library to do that. And we're also going to be doing a Polar Express Storytime on Saturday, the twenty-third, at five-thirty, and that's going to be in the library. And then we've got a really fun thing that we're doing, so it is a hat decorating contest. And so the, just find a hat, any hat, and decorate it with, in your favorite winter theme. And we're having two age categories, twelve and under, and we have little cute little trophies that people can win for, for second and third prize. And then we have ages thirteen and up, and first prize will be thirty dollars in Chamber bucks, um, Chamber dollars. Second prize will be twenty dollars, third prize will be ten dollars in Chamber dollars, so people can shop locally. And the, really, you decorate the, the hat however you want, and we, in whatever winter theme floats your boat. It can be Christmas, it could be Hanukkah, it could be Kwanzaa, it could be Yule, it could be Hockey Day, it could be Groundhog Day, we really don't care. And then we, um, will take all of the submissions to put on display in the library by December thirteenth, and then that week, we want people to come into the library and vote. So it's going to be commute, the community is going to decide who wins. So please, stop by the library and check it out. And that's all of that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Laura? Diane? Okay. Dave, you got anything? Neil?
Got a couple things. Just wanted to follow up, uh, from last meeting's, uh, public input. There was a couple of questions asked that, uh, maybe weren't quite as accurate as, as they may have seemed. There was a request for an ordinance that, uh, uh, seemed that it didn't get, uh, addressed, although it did get addressed at about twenty-four minutes after the request. So I just want you to know that, uh, um, sometimes these things that pop up aren't quite as accurate as, uh, as presented, okay? Um, the second thing is, uh, we also had another input that, about a water bill, um, and that wasn't quite, uh, as accurate also, that there was only one call, not a bunch of calls. So just wanted to make things clear, uh, uh, these attacks on the staff, I don't appreciate when I know they're not accurate. Um, the third thing, you passed a bunch of resolutions this, uh, this meeting, um, so expect a whole lot of activity in, in the town of Cannon Falls. Um, what you passed in them resolutions was construction projects on all the county roads that are within the city limits, and they will be under construction this summer along with County Highway nine, or State Highway nineteen, heading out to the school from, uh, the stoplights. So you got, uh, a milling overlay going from the stoplights all the way out to the roundabouts this year coming up. You got a milling overlay and, and a bunch of handicap ramps going east out of, uh, from the stoplights to the school, and then a milling overlay on all the other, um, additional, uh, county roads in town. So hang on. And then we'll have a milling overlay for the city that we've been working, Dan and I have been working on, gathering up some information on what we should be doing. So you'll see that coming up here within the month or two, so we can get on the, on the early requests like we did last year. Um, we had a Sandstone Ridge meeting, um, that we had here last week, I believe. Um, it, uh, it was an eye-opening, uh, meeting. We discussed, uh, engineering again, we stuck, discussed Park Board, as, uh, Matt had, uh, referred to. We stuck, uh, discussed zoning and EDA and marketing, and, uh, so we're going to be putting together a, an RFP-RFQ combination to get this out to the developers if there's interest in developing that land. Um, we'll have another meeting to go over the draft RFP-RFQ here in the near future. We haven't scheduled that yet, but, uh, we will get that done. And that's all I got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, anything?
Nothing.
Matt?
Just want to say, uh, congratulations to the fall sports for Cannon Falls Bombers, football, uh, having a great season, just falling short of the, of state, and volleyball, sixth in state, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Very good. Bill?
Nothing.
Derek? Mary Jill?
I have a glue gun. So if anyone would like help with their hat that they're going to decorate for Nicole, give me a call. Oh, sorry.
Steve?
I don't have anything.
Okay, I don't have anything either. But I want to, before I adjourn, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And we'll see you in a couple weeks. Motion adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Gives me a second by Duncan to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Carried.